Welcome to FPBS Meet the Candidates. This Cable 10 series allows you, the viewer, to get a closer look at our candidates and how they feel about issues affecting our community. This is all leading up to the general election, where early voting starts on October 13th and goes until Election Day on November 3rd. So for our interviews, we took questions from the community via email and social media. And so we're going to talk about the shakeup in city government, how COVID is affecting our community, confronting social injustice on a local level, and much more. So we have a lot to talk about, so we better jump right in. Today's guest is Anna Marie Rosen, and she is a candidate for City Commission. So Anna Marie, I'm going to turn it over to you and let you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit why you've chosen to run for City Commission.
Thank you, Kathy. Yes, I'm Anna Marie Rosen, running for City Commission. I want to first thank Cable 10 for doing these Meet the Candidate interviews. Very important to share our message with the community, especially during this time when we're limited by the virus. So a little background about myself, I studied fine arts and mechanical engineering, and then went to work for 3M Company, which is where I met my husband, Richard. Now, we've been married 40 years. 3M transferred us to Austin, Texas, and a little over 10 years ago, we decided and moved to Frankfurt. We enjoy being part of the friendly and amazing community of Frankfurt. We enjoy the people, the historic sites, the classic architecture. And we love living in the capital. During the past four years, I was the Director on the Board for the Frankfurt Plant Board, and I was stunned to discover that important decisions were made without critical review of the facts. I dig into details and study problems from multiple perspectives. My goal is to determine the best long-term solutions for the entire community based on public input and careful research. Frankfurt is a great place and has so much going for it. Together, we can make Frankfurt an even better place to live, and I believe that I can make that vital contribution by being a City Commissioner. Thank you.
Great. So since we last spoke, the City Commission and Mayor have fired our City Manager, Keith Parker. So why can't Frankfurt keep a City Manager on a long-term basis?
Well, you know, I've talked to people, I've thought about that, and talked to some of the Commissioners as well, and I can't put my finger on one specific thing. I think it's a communication problem, and perhaps the ideals for the Commission and the Mayor, and how that interconnects with the City Commissioner, I'm sorry, with the City Manager, who is responsible for day-to-day operations. And as a Commission candidate and as a Commissioner, I would like to work and have close understanding of what the different parts of the city are doing and where the line is between the responsibilities of the City Manager and the Commission and Mayor. I note that this firing is just 18 months after Cindy Steinhauser was fired, and that is very concerning. I do not feel that it is a problem with the system. I think it's a problem with communication and the people involved.
Okay. Well, according to the Kentucky League of Cities, only about 5% of Kentucky's cities use a City Manager Plan. So what are the advantages of the City Manager Plan? And is that the form of government that you support? Or do you think Frankfurt should look at more of a Mayor/Council Plan?
I think the City Manager Plan is a good plan. I think that perhaps guidelines need to be laid out as to how it should work, and I think it is a responsive plan, since the City Manager handles the day-to-day operations, and the Commission and Mayor work on strategy and longer-term goals.
Okay. So how should the City Commission handle the search for a new City Manager? Should the current Mayor and City Commission go ahead and try to fill that role? Or should they wait until the new city leadership is in place and let the new leadership fill that role?
I've thought about that question, and since at most, two of the incumbents could be on the Commission again, that means two out of the five people who make decisions would be, continue on at most, and that three of those people would be totally new people. I think it's a better solution to continue to work with the interim manager and that the new City Commission take that on as they move into office.
Okay. Obviously, this has been a hot-button issue for our community, and it's been troubling for some. So if elected, what would you suggest the City Commission do to boost public confidence in city government?
Wow, that's, that really gets to the heart of the issue. I think communicating with residents, being available to them. We have the restrictions of the virus, but to set up means for residents to contact Commissioners and give them their ideas. I think that the election itself will show what people think of the different messages from various candidates, and that will be an important indicator as to what direction things should go.
Okay. If elected, would you support the appointment of a Citizens Advisory Committee tasked with the identification of opportunities to improve the functions of city government, including overall structure and the roles and responsibilities of both appointed and elected Managers?
I think that having a non-binding Council or Panel look at the situation would be helpful. It would be good information. It is an interesting question, because I think studies are done all the time, how much they are incorporated into the focus of the new Commission. But since it will be a very new Commission, having a Panel look at this question, how the people on the Panel are selected, of course, would reflect what the results might be. So I'm not sure on how they would be selected, perhaps allowing each candidate to choose two participants to be on the Panel, so that there's some cohesion there and interest. But again, I think the election itself will define the direction.
Okay. I will move on to a new topic. As of this week, there have been more than 500 positive cases reported of COVID-19 in Franklin County. Do you feel like the city leadership has taken an effectively aggressive role in slowing the spread in our community? And what more can the city do to help in this regards?
Yes, it is a difficult question, and we are losing businesses. There is a farm that brought wine to the farmer's market from Shelby County. They closed down and moved. We lost Carletta Barber Shop on Broadway, and I'm sure other businesses. So we're not only losing people to illness and death, unfortunately, in some cases, but we're losing businesses, we're losing connectivity as a, as a community. And what the City Commission can do is find ways to be helpful. One way that I would like to see is to close off St. Clair, so that those restaurants can do more outside and have entertainment for people in an open-air situation. I think scrutinizing what the city is spending money on and not spending money on things that could be delayed until we have more income. I think promoting safe health, as in wearing masks, washing your hands, all the things that our Governor goes through with us four times a week, would be helpful. I know that there are some legislation through the state to help people with rents or to, you know, not be evicted, but still, the bottom line there is, when their jobs do open up and they're gainfully employed, can they ever catch up with those costs? And how to deal with that, and how landlords are dealing with their bank loans. So to encourage conversation, to find solutions, is a big question. And I know it's a big question for the state, as well as for smaller communities. And I believe that there will be some help from the federal government. However, they have their own problems in working out which direction and what to do. So I don't have a total solution, but for the current time, it's patience and stop the spread of the virus, and hopefully with a vaccine, we can reopen and redo some of the things that we're used to doing.
So four months ago, we discussed the looming economic crisis that would result from the pandemic. And now we're seeing the negative impact, as you've been discussing. So if elected, what tough decisions is the City Commission going to have to make as far as the budget, and how would you address that?
Yes. Unfortunately, the virus impact comes to budget and money. I think that the city budget is not in as bad a condition as it might be thought, since they spent almost no money on parks and did not open the pool. So $2 million of the city budget was not spent, and that should help for immediate situations. I think moving ahead on developing Parcels BNC will be critical to bring us back out of the economic situation that we're in. And as businesses are able to reinstate themselves and serve more customers, that will help as well. I think it'll be a slow recovery, but not an impossible recovery.
Okay. Well, beyond affecting our community's physical health and financial health, it's also affecting our mental health. The CDC indicates that younger adults, racial and ethnic minorities, and essential workers are reporting having experienced disproportionately worse mental health outcomes, increased substance abuse, elevated suicidal ideation. So what efforts can be taken at the local level, do you think, to address these associated mental health conditions?
Well, it is a big problem, and it's interesting how the virus has affected almost all levels of the community. Isolation for seniors, isolation of young people who would normally get together more. There is no easy solution, but I think one thing that would help everyone is to get outside with safe distances and get some exercise. Just seeing other people, even if you're not having close interaction with them, is helpful, and moving around is good. So just kind of like dealing with the virus itself, doing small things for yourself to help you through is all we can really do, since it's so awkward to bring people together, only a few people, and only at distances. Participating in Zoom meetings is good. Reading, writing letters, the library is open, limited hours, but still you can get books, and you can participate in the different book clubs by Zoom. So I think being cautious and thinking about other people and helping them where you can. And there is no easy solution. But I think if people got outside, just even on their own, just to walk, to be aware of the outdoors, it would be helpful.
The Mayor and the City Commission have taken a hit lately, as folks are questioning their transparency on issues and processes. So as a City Commissioner, what would you do to ensure improvement of transparency in city government?
Well, I would share the reasons and the thought process, more importantly, of how decisions are made. And I think that there is a kind of a pullback, where Commissioners, Mayor may not say what they're really thinking, but to lay out what is the reasoning behind what is happening. I think that the firing of Keith Parker without cause is, on some levels at least, ridiculous, since there was a cause, there was a reason. And to say without cause just is a disservice to the community. It doesn't help them understand what's going on, understand the complexity, the reasoning. So I think sharing as you go along as much as possible. And I think another outstanding case of not sharing is the case of Breonna Taylor. I know our Governor has asked that they at least reveal what is the process you're going through, where are you stuck, without giving data or information that might imperil the court decisions. So I think by better communicating.
Okay. Well, that takes me to my next question. This summer, after the deaths of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd, our country saw a rising movement and calls for social justice. So my first question to you is, do Black Lives Matter?
Yes, definitely they do. And it's interesting, the perspective of minorities versus the general white population. The general white population looks at their freedoms, someone's going to take them away to give them to these other people, and those other people are still aspiring to what, according to the Constitution, they should have had all along. And that there is systemic racism. The thing, I was talking to a friend who said she was going out of town, and this was before the virus, and she asked a neighbor to pick up her mail, and he said, "Well, I'm a black person living in white America. How is it going to look if I'm over there emptying your mailbox every day?" And this is something that another neighbor would never think of. So those problems are there, and we need to address them. And ways that we can address them is have more programs to incorporate young people into learning about the Police Department, Fire Department, working in the city office, incorporating people from the community into our businesses and our systems, without regard to who they are and what their background is. So it can become more inclusive.
So how do you feel the city rates when it comes to effectively addressing social injustices? And do you see where improvements can be made?
Well, it is hard to rate that, because I'm essentially in the city, so it's hard to rate yourself. But I think some areas are education, and I'm participating in a Focus on Race Relations program, along with the Kentucky History Center, where we're having a forum to discuss about races, discuss racism through Zoom, and offered it to teachers across Kentucky. And I will be one of the small group facilitators after the major presentation is made. So Focus on Race Relations, led by Ed Polk, the focus is to talk to people, to bring up these uncomfortable topics, and point out where the differences are that people may not have realized, and that they might have a different opinion about, and to talk about that, to maybe move them more towards the center.
Okay. Well, in the early summer, a group of young activists sponsored a march up Capitol Avenue in support of the Black Lives Matter movement. What can city leaders do to encourage more young people to become more civically engaged?
Well, I think the first step is to listen to them, to say, "See, I see you have some things to say, I want to hear what you have to say," to show actively that you're listening, show up and be there. I did participate in a little of that march. It was extremely a hot day, and I gave up, unfortunately. But I think demonstrating that you're listening is the very first step, and asking them what they would like to see happen, asking them for their input is the best that we can do.
Okay. Well, let's talk about TIF for a minute. We've got a big piece of land downtown, Parcels BNC, that everybody's focused on, and now we're, have the big discussion about the TIF, and there's public hearings and public input and all of that. So can you explain to our viewers how the TIF works and, or would work, and if it would be something that you support?
Yes. The TIF, Tax Increment Financing, is a very interesting instrument, and what amazed me at this point in Parcels BNC is that there was no discussion about whatever traditional funding might be. And I think traditional would be, the city lays out the streets and says, "Businesses, would you like to buy a lot and build a business here?" We didn't go that route. We went with the developer that was chosen through the state system, and then immediately didn't really even consider different options, just went to tax increment financing. And I think it's a system that can work. The county and the city hired a consultant to work through that. So it would be anticipating the tax income that would come from the new buildings, the new businesses that would be there, and making an agreement for so many, so much of a time period, it could be two decades, to donate, or not donate, but turn that money over to the developer and the construction company. And I'm not sure of the split there, but it's basically saying, "We're, we're doing a contract with you to give money in advance, or money that will be coming, that you will get, rather than the state or the city or the county will receive." And they are looking at that with the idea that school districts, their portion of the tax money that they would get would not go to this. But it is a little bit like looking into a crystal ball and saying, "Okay, there'll be all this tax money, and we're going to give it away before we even get it," which is a concern and needs to be looked at very carefully, and looked at from the standpoint of other cities that have done the same thing. There's active projects in Paducah and in Lexington, and those have been controversial and are something that we should really look at carefully, since they are the same developer and contractor in all three cases, including ours.
Okay. All right. We'll move on. As funding has been reduced from Downtown Frankfurt, Inc. and KCDC, do you think this minimizes the effectiveness of their missions to either attract or support businesses to our, in our community?
Yes, that area has been in controversy for a while, Downtown Frankfurt and Fort Grade. It has no head person, and the person who was in charge resigned without a replacement. And when Downtown Frankfurt started, it was a group of merchants coming together to start that operation, and then it was, became more funded by the city and the county. Whether it's really meeting the needs of downtown businesses is a question, and perhaps that's why the seat has not been filled. Kentucky Capital Development Corporation has the controversy of Duncan Road, where a store building was destroyed, trees were taken down. Whether they're reaching their goals of what is laid out for them in their structure of the development corporation is another question. So I think those two areas need to be looked at carefully. I think by the county defunding those, it brings up the question of, the county doesn't believe that things are going properly, and it should be looked at carefully to decide, are these two organizations meeting their charter? And what should we do? What would be in their best interest?
Well, what can a city do to support these agencies, if it's, if their mission is something that we need here in our community?
Well, I think set goals for them and ask them how you're meeting these goals. So that funding would be tied directly to, these are the goals, have you met them? What can we do? What should we be doing?
Okay. If elected, how would you involve business leaders and board appointments and the processes of decision-making in city government?
Yes. As always, input from businesses is critical to how we continue with the city. And having their input on board appointments, either to the Mayor or to the Commissioners, is important, and I think good. There are statutes that guide how board appointments are made, and those are state statutes that we must follow, and they are specific as to the Mayor and approval by the Commissioner or not, and how those board appointments are made. So I think following those appointments, but that all of those businesses have valuable input, and that we should be looking at that when we make board appointments. So I think we should continue to do what we're doing with better communication.
Okay. So what is your plan to address Frankfurt's low-income housing problem? And if elected, would you support a city ordinance which supports, which adopts the Uniform Residential Landlord Tenet Act that other cities have done?
Yes, I have looked into that a little bit, and it is a complex ordinance. I believe that the city of Louisville has adopted it for some specific areas. And I do think that people at all income levels offer character and qualities to the city that are hard to itemize, but are important, and everyone should be included. And when we look at new construction, usually the rents go up, they rarely go down. So to have tiered, different levels of rent is important, to include everyone is important. And I'm not directly familiar with that statute, but I like the concept of it, so I would be in favor of including those provisions to make it possible to everyone to continue to live in the city.
What can city leadership do to foster a more partnering relationship with Kentucky State University? And would you support the expeditious completion of the Thoroughbred Trail, which leads from downtown to K-State?
Yes, the old Pixley Railroad Trail. I have hiked it a number of times. I think it would be a great asset to the city. I'm very much in favor of trails that would connect all of the parks around the city. And yes, I'm not sure where the problem is. I know originally it was a problem working things out with the railroad and their track that comes to the bottom of that trail. As my understanding is, the Kentucky State is very positive about the trail and looking forward to having that completed access that isn't just a narrow sidewalk along Main Street. So I think communication, I'm not sure if funding is part of the problem, but making it a priority is possibly a part that would help. So communication and setting it as a priority to make that happen. I think I've heard about that for almost 10 years. It's been in the works.
Okay. Well, in 2021, Frankfurt will have a new Mayor, a new City Manager, at least two new City Commissioners, a new Chamber of Commerce Director, and a new Director of DFI, maybe. So these are, these are big changes, considering the gravity of local projects that are underway in our community, and we're coming out of what has been an exceptionally challenging year. So what do you see as the challenges and opportunities that these changes provide?
Well, I think it opens us up a lot of opportunities for new people, new ideas, and gives the whole situation a certain amount of energy, since there are all these possibilities It is a lot at once, but I, in talking to people through the campaign, mainly by telephone, a lot of people have opinions and would like to see more community situations in parks, possibly with a park staff person handing out balls and providing some structure for sports, which is just a small component of everything you're talking about. But I think also, the virus has encouraged people to stay home, and Americans can't travel to Canada or Europe. So everyone is here. Golfing is a much more interesting sport with more people, and I think people have come to value their homes and their communities, because we're all here. And I think that there are a lot of possibilities, we can do positive things. I know in talking to some business owners about Parcels BNC, they said, "Yes, they're good ideas, not sure about all the details, but I hope something really happens." So I think we're at that point where we can make things happen, and that we have the focus, we have plenty of people with good ideas. So keep communicating and focus on those problems and develop some solutions and implement them.
Okay. Well, Anna Marie, we've come to the end of our time, so I'm going to turn it over to you and let you address our viewers directly. Let them know why you're the best candidate for a City Commission. Feel free to ask for their vote, and tell them where they can find more information about you.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. I'm very happy to be a candidate for City Commission. I bring important strengths that move projects forward. My background in working on technical problems, both with 3M, where I worked with people from all kinds of backgrounds and international company, I had supervisors, Managers from other countries that gave me different perspectives on things. Working on the Board for the Plant Board means that I have the skills to understand complex issues and find solutions. I enjoy tackling problems. Well, beyond the Frankfurt Plant Board, I promoted common-sense strategies to reduce wait times and lowers the stress of customers and also the staff. I believe that public institutions should put people first and be transparent, meaning explain what's going on and why you're making those decisions. And I also believe in using extreme care and managing public money. Frankfurt has a lot of opportunity and is about to turn a page in a new chapter. The development of Parcels BNC presents growth the city has not seen in decades. The Commission needs to work hand in glove with the developer very closely to choose choices that are good for Frankfurt. If elected, I would advance our city by working with the Mayor and Commissioners to reach out to the community for ideas and their concerns, while we focus on the And I think it's a system that can work.[1011.00-1014.69][S02] The county and the city hired a consultant to work through that.[1014.69-1020.86][S02] So it would be anticipating the tax income that would come from the new buildings, the[1020.86-1027.63][S02] new businesses that would be there, and making an agreement for so many, so much of a time[1027.63-1034.25][S02] period, it could be two decades, to donate, or not donate, but turn that money over[1034.25-1039.63][S02] to the developer and the construction company, and I'm not sure of the split there, but[1039.63-1045.58][S02] it's basically saying, "We're, we're doing a contract with you to give money in advance[1045.58-1049.63][S02] or money that will be coming that you will get rather than the state or the city or[1049.63-1051.86][S02] the county will receive."[1051.86-1057.08][S02] And they are looking at that with the idea that school districts, their portion of[1057.08-1060.83][S02] the tax money that they would get would not go to this.[1060.83-1065.83][S02] But it is a little bit like looking into a crystal ball and saying, "Okay, there'll[1065.83-1069.63][S02] be all this tax money and we're going to give it away before we even get it," which[1069.63-1073.75][S02] is a concern and needs to be looked at very carefully and looked at from the standpoint[1073.75-1076.51][S02] of other cities that have done the same thing.[1076.51-1082.83][S02] There's active projects in Paducah and in Lexington, and those have been controversial[1082.83-1087.63][S02] and are something that we should really look at carefully since they are the same developer[1087.63-1092.01][S02] and contractor in all three cases, including ours.[1092.01-1098.25][S01] Okay, all right, we'll move on.[1098.25-1102.86][S01] As funding has been reduced from Downtown Frankfurt, Inc. and KCDC, do you think this[1102.86-1108.33][S01] minimizes the effectiveness of their missions to either attract or support businesses to[1108.33-1109.33][S01] our, in our community?[1109.33-1115.51][S02] Yes, that area has been in controversy for a while, Downtown[1115.51-1116.51][S02] Frankfurt and Fort Grate.[1116.51-1127.13][S02] It has no head person and the person who was in charge resigned without a replacement.[1127.13-1132.41][S02] And when Downtown Frankfurt started, it was a group of merchants coming together to start[1132.41-1138.08][S02] that operation and then it was, became more funded by the city and the county.[1138.08-1144.47][S02] And whether it's really meeting the needs of downtown businesses is a question and[1144.47-1148.47][S02] perhaps that's why the seat has not been filled.[1148.47-1155.58][S02] Kentucky Capital Development Corporation has the controversy of Duncan Road where a[1155.58-1159.91][S02] store building was destroyed, trees were taken down.[1159.91-1167.75][S02] Whether they're reaching their goals of what is laid out for them in their structure of[1167.75-1170.91][S02] the development corporation is another question.[1170.91-1173.33][S02] So I think those two areas need to be looked at carefully.[1173.33-1178.33][S02] I think by the county defunding those, it brings up the question of the county does[1178.33-1185.58][S02] not believe that things are going properly and it should be looked at carefully to decide,[1185.58-1190.41][S02] "Are these two organizations meeting their charter and what should we do?[1190.41-1191.75][S02] What would be in their best interest?"[1191.75-1195.97][S01] Well, what can a city do to support these agencies if it's, if their[1195.97-1198.13][S01] mission is something that we need here in our community?[1198.13-1204.51][S02] Well, I think set goals for them and ask them how you're[1204.51-1206.01][S02] meeting these goals.[1206.01-1212.13][S02] So that funding would be tied directly to, "These are the goals, have you met them?[1212.13-1213.75][S02] What can we do?[1213.75-1214.75][S02] What should we be doing?"[1214.75-1220.25][S01] Okay, if elected, how would you involve business leaders and[1220.25-1225.08][S01] board appointments and the processes of decision-making in city government?[1225.08-1232.75][S02] Yes, as always, input from businesses is critical to how we continue[1232.75-1234.63][S02] with the city.[1234.63-1238.83][S02] And having their input on board appointments, either to the Mayor or to the Commissioners,[1238.83-1240.86][S02] is important and I think good.[1240.86-1246.47][S02] There are statutes that guide how board appointments are made and those are state statutes[1246.47-1251.86][S02] that we must follow and they are specific as to the Mayor and approval by the Commissioner[1251.86-1254.58][S02] or not and how those board appointments are made.[1254.58-1260.51][S02] So I think following those appointments, but that all of those businesses have valuable[1260.51-1264.86][S02] input and that we should be looking that, at that when we make board appointments.[1264.86-1269.13][S02] So I think we should continue to do what we're doing with better communication.[1269.13-1276.63][S01] Okay, so what is your plan to address Frankfurt's low-income housing problem?[1276.63-1283.01][S01] And if elected, would you support a city ordinance which supports, which adopts the Uniform[1283.01-1286.33][S01] Residential Landlord Tenant Act that other cities have done?[1286.33-1294.13][S02] Yes, I have looked into that a little bit and it is a complex ordinance.[1294.13-1298.91][S02] I believe that the city of Louisville has adopted it for some specific areas.[1298.91-1305.33][S02] And I do think that people at all income levels offer character and qualities to the[1305.33-1311.25][S02] city that are hard to itemize but are important and they, everyone should be included.[1311.25-1316.75][S02] And when we look at new construction, usually the rents go up, they rarely go down.[1316.75-1323.75][S02] So to have tiered different levels of rent is important, to include everyone is important.[1323.75-1328.33][S02] And I'm not directly familiar with that statute, but I like the concept of it.[1328.33-1334.25][S02] So I would be in favor of including those provisions to make it possible to everyone[1334.25-1336.33][S02] to continue to live in the city.[1336.33-1343.97][S01] What can city leadership do to foster a more partnering relationship[1343.97-1346.13][S01] with Kentucky State University?[1346.13-1350.41][S01] And would you support the expeditious completion of the Thoroughbred Trail, which leads from[1350.41-1352.01][S01] downtown to K-State?[1352.01-1355.86][S02] Yes, the old Pixley Railroad Trail.[1355.86-1358.01][S02] I have hiked it a number of times.[1358.01-1360.51][S02] I think it would be a great asset to the city.[1360.51-1366.47][S02] I'm very much in favor of trails that would connect all of the parks around the city.[1366.47-1369.33][S02] And yes, I'm not sure where the problem is.[1369.33-1373.25][S02] I know originally it was a problem working things out with the railroad and their track[1373.25-1376.63][S02] that comes to the bottom of that trail.[1376.63-1380.75][S02] As my understanding is that Kentucky State is very positive about the trail and looking[1380.75-1387.33][S02] forward to having a completed access that isn't just a narrow sidewalk along Main Street.[1387.33-1389.63][S02] So I think communication.[1389.63-1396.75][S02] I'm not sure funding is part of the problem, but making it a priority is possibly a part[1396.75-1398.01][S02] that would help.[1398.01-1402.33][S02] So communication and setting it as a priority to make that happen.[1402.33-1405.51][S02] I think I've heard about that for almost 10 years.[1405.51-1407.86][S02] It's been in the works.[1407.86-1414.41][S01] Okay, well, in 2021, Frankfurt will have a new Mayor, a new City Manager,[1414.41-1420.41][S01] at least two new City Commissioners, a new Chamber of Commerce Director, and a new Director[1420.41-1422.41][S01] of DFI, maybe.[1422.41-1426.86][S01] So these are, these are big changes considering the gravity of local projects that are underway[1426.86-1432.51][S01] in our community and, and we're coming out of what has been an exceptionally challenging[1432.51-1433.51][S01] year.[1433.51-1438.13][S01] So what do you see as the challenges and opportunities that these changes provide?[1438.13-1444.01][S02] Well, I think it opens us up a lot of opportunities for new people,[1444.01-1453.63][S02] new ideas, and gives the whole situation a certain amount of energy since there are[1453.63-1458.63][S02] all these possibilities open.[1458.63-1465.13][S02] It is a lot at once, but I, in talking to people through the campaign, mainly by telephone,[1465.13-1472.33][S02] a lot of people have opinions and, and would like to see more community situations in parks,[1472.33-1480.13][S02] possibly with a park staff person handing out balls and providing some structure for[1480.13-1483.51][S02] sports, which is just a small component of everything you're talking about.[1483.51-1490.25][S02] But I think also the virus has encouraged people to stay home and Americans can't travel[1490.25-1492.25][S02] to Canada or Europe.[1492.25-1493.51][S02] So everyone is here.[1493.51-1501.25][S02] Golfing is a much more interesting sport with more people and I think people have come[1501.25-1506.33][S02] to value their homes and their communities because we're all here.[1506.33-1510.63][S02] And I think that there are a lot of possibilities, we can do positive things.[1510.63-1515.25][S02] I know in talking to some business owners about Parcells BNC, they said, "Yes, they're[1515.25-1520.86][S02] good ideas, not sure about all the details, but I hope something really happens."[1520.86-1525.25][S02] So I think we're at that point where we can make things happen and that we have the[1525.25-1528.86][S02] focus, we have plenty of people with good ideas.[1528.86-1535.13][S02] So keep communicating and focus on those problems and develop some solutions and[1535.13-1536.13][S02] implement them.[1536.13-1540.01][S01] Okay, well, Anna Marie, we've come to the end of our time,[1540.01-1544.33][S01] so I'm going to turn it over to you and let you address our viewers directly.[1544.33-1547.86][S01] Let them know why you're the best candidate for a City Commission.[1547.86-1551.25][S01] Feel free to ask for their vote and tell them where they can find more information[1551.25-1552.25][S01] about you.[1552.25-1555.01][S03] Okay, thank you, Kathy.[1555.01-1558.51][S03] I'm very happy to be a candidate for City Commission.[1558.51-1561.51][S03] I bring important strengths that move projects forward.[1561.51-1566.25][S03] My background in working on technical problems, both with 3M, where I worked with people[1566.25-1569.08][S03] from all kinds of backgrounds in international company.[1569.08-1576.33][S03] I had supervisors, managers from other countries that gave me different perspectives[1576.33-1577.33][S03] on things.[1577.33-1583.13][S03] Working on the board for the plant board means that I have the skills to understand[1583.13-1586.08][S03] complex issues and find solutions.[1586.08-1588.25][S03] I enjoy tackling problems.[1588.25-1594.41][S03] While beyond the Frankfurt Plant Board, I promoted common sense strategies to reduce[1594.41-1598.91][S03] wait times and lowers the stress of customers and also the staff.[1598.91-1607.51][S03] I believe that public institutions should put people first and be transparent, meaning[1607.51-1611.51][S03] explain what's going on and why you're making those decisions.[1611.51-1616.13][S03] And I also believe in using extreme care on managing public money.[1616.13-1622.33][S03] Frankfurt has a lot of opportunity and is about to turn a page in a new chapter.[1622.33-1631.86][S03] The development of Parcells BNC presents growth the city has not seen in decades.[1631.86-1639.33][S03] The Commission needs to work hand in glove with the developer very closely to choose[1639.33-1642.33][S03] choices that are good for Frankfurt.[1642.33-1646.51][S03] If elected, I would advance our city by working with the Mayor and Commissioners to reach[1646.51-1654.41][S03] out to the community for ideas and their concerns while we focus on the best long-term[1654.41-1655.41][S03] choices.[1655.41-1659.75][S03] As a retired engineer, I have the training and time to dedicate my understanding to[1659.75-1660.86][S03] complex issues.[1660.86-1666.13][S03] I ask questions, seek information from experts, and consult with all parties to determine[1666.13-1667.51][S03] a solution.[1667.51-1674.86][S03] I love being in this friendly community with its historic character, the Kentucky River,[1674.86-1680.63][S03] parks, and I think it has great potential to become even more than just the capital[1680.63-1687.25][S03] of Kentucky, to develop its character and be appeal, an appealing place for people to[1687.25-1691.33][S03] visit, to have their homes here and also to work here.[1691.33-1694.33][S03] I'm position number five on the ballot.[1694.33-1696.51][S03] Please vote.[1696.51-1703.01][S03] That's very important for our democracy and you can start asking, requesting absentee ballots[1703.01-1714.63][S03] now through October 13th and absentee voting will start shortly after that.[1714.63-1720.01][S03] So please vote either on Election Day or before that and thank you for your support.[1720.01-1722.86][S01] Well, we thank you for your time today.[1722.86-1725.63][S01] I know our viewers appreciate hearing from our candidates.[1725.63-1731.01][S01] I certainly appreciate being able to talk to you and, and ask you some questions.[1731.01-1734.75][S01] To our viewers, I want to thank you for watching because it is important that you get[1734.75-1739.86][S01] informed before you make a decision.[1739.86-1743.86][S01] You can go, when you go vote and you can do that by either getting an absentee ballot[1743.86-1749.91][S01] and you can mail it in or you can drop it off down at the Old FPB office next to City[1749.91-1750.91][S01] Hall.[1750.91-1752.91][S01] They'll have a drop box there that's secure.[1752.91-1758.13][S01] You can go there for early voting, like Anna Marie said, starting October 13th up until[1758.13-1760.01][S01] Election Day on November 3rd.[1760.01-1765.13][S01] And on November 3rd, there'll be multiple polling stations and you can go to Franklin[1765.13-1768.13][S01] County, County Clerk's Office to get more information about that and we'll be sharing[1768.13-1771.13][S01] more information about that in the future as well.[1771.13-1772.86][S01] So lots of opportunities to vote.[1772.86-1774.86][S01] We encourage you to do so.[1774.86-1777.86][S01] And I think that's going to wrap us up for this edition of Meet the Candidates.[1777.86-1778.86][S01] We'll see you next time.[1778.86-1796.13][music]